Call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, September 24th. First item on our agenda tonight is roll call. Carosa.
Here.
Lancy. Beck.
Here.
Piper.
Here.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Chantet?
No.
Baron?
Malone is chanting.
Oh, Malone. Malone was here, okay. Baron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Ayazi?
Here.
Malay?
Here.
Uwer?
Here.
Sharon? Vogelsinger. Okay, item two on our agenda is a reminder if you come up to use the microphone, make sure you can see the green light on it when you're talking and you can hear yourself in the background. Item three is approval of minutes for July 30th, 2024, August 13th, 2024, and September 10th of 2024. Anybody have any corrections? Motion to recommend a council?
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by itself, a second by Uwer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Anything to be added, changed tonight on the agenda?
I don't think so. Not very.
Okay. We'll move on to item five, matters from the public. For anything not on the agenda tonight, does anybody have anything for not on the agenda? Okay. And then to item six, the consent agenda. Back.
Consent agenda tonight is Resolution 2024-124-R, authorizing execution of an IGA with King County for animal control. And I would move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Beck, second by Malay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and it passes. Move on to item seven, which is a presentation from Communications Department for annual update. Welcome.
Are we gonna make it bigger or no? Is that good?
It's fine.
Oh, it's fine? Okay. Hello, everyone. Thank you for giving me some time to talk about the Communications Department, just an annual update. I skipped it last year, but that's because metrics were changing and we had switched the website at the same time, so I waited a year. So when I told Laura I wanted to present tonight and I had a few slides, she said, "Oh, it would be really nice if the city could do a presentation like Main Street with all the, you know, scrolling videos and things." But I'm pull-down maps old, so you're gonna get an old, total old-school, straight-up presentation. Since I was hired here in 2022, there's some new faces here, so I thought I'd just give a brief overview about myself. I joined the staff in 2022, and I've been a Batavian since 2003, so 20 years. I consider myself a townie now. I've been a professional communicator for 39 years. I started out in newspapers in 1985 at the Northwest Herald, the Shaw publication. I went to the Daily Herald, and I ended my career in newspapers at the Tribune in 2015. Then I had a brief career in university marketing at NIU and UIC. And then I got this role here, so I'm super happy to be here. I'm also involved in the community. I'm a former member of the Water Street Studios Board and a current member of the Flag Day Committee. And my husband and I are Santa and Mrs. Claus. You may see us at the Batavia Boardwalk Shops in December on Sundays. Come see us. So a little bit about the Communication Department, our channels and assets. So we have one full-time employee, that's me. And then, since we have one full-time employee, we need a lot of vendors and partnerships. So we have Phrase, Civic Plus, Moncito. Those are all of our website partners and providers. Reach Media is the lobby monitors. Mailchimp is our email server. We use Shutterstock, Canva, Bothan Pictures, Orvis Media. Those are all video and photo vendors. And recently, we've added OnSol for notifications. All that comes to a grand total of about $151,000 annually in expenditures for communications. So I'm gonna start with the website. So that's the foundation of all our city information. We like that to be the most current source of information for the city. This is the old website, which we updated in August of 2023. Our goal in refreshing the website was to make it a little easier to navigate and more intuitive for people to find what they were looking for when they come to the website. So we had a few tweaks, and you can see on the new website, let's see if this works, I can go out to the website. We changed the navigation at the top to be a little bit more intuitive. We added these buttons here. This was the, based on the top 10 things that were search terms, so we made it easier for people to get to that information. We update the news, this is called Newsflash, but it's news and highlights, and I update this every day. I try to, anyway. And then calendar and events, it's just, they're two different ways of seeing the same calendar that's the city calendar.
Wait right there, can I ask you one question?
You sure can, yeah.
Back to the buttons that were up there, when you go and click on something simple like that, like the road diet, is there a simple way from clicking on that just to share that? Or do you have to copy it? Because that's what I've been doing.
Yeah, so this, if you clicked on the actual thing, you kind of have to go here. You have to read a little bit more into it, and then your additional info would also get you to the same area. And then, here you go.
Because I tried to, rather than, you know, try to explain things to people, share that.
Yeah, and you know, we created a short link, too, and I would really encourage everyone to come here. This is the most current and best information. There's a lot more in here if you want to take a deeper dive, including some research on road diets. And that, you can go to the short URL, which is bataviail.gov/roaddiet. So you just have to remember road diet with our website. So yeah, immediately, we had some people on social media talking about the road diet today, positive and negative, so I'm really happy with the positive comments that we're getting. So through next coming days, please share with your community that this is happening finally. All right. Oh, where was I? Sorry about that. Next one. Then, as part of the redesign, we added what are called department headers, but what those really are are just microsites within the regular website. This was, we transitioned some independent websites that we had for the Batavia Environmental Commission and for the Bike Commission. We brought those in-house and gave them their own advisory commission website. That's these here. All of their content from the other sites came on to this page. Let's go back to, where was I? I think I can go. And then we also, and that page had about 837 page views. And then we also created a new website for academic development to facilitate marketing for the city, and that was about 1,200 page views. Those are okay. I think they're pretty good for new webpages and websites, but next year I'd like to work on driving that traffic a little bit more, updating the pages more, and sharing that information on social media. The metrics for the website, the green is this year, that would be August to August, and then the blue is last year, '22 to '23. And for total users, that's unique user, visitors who come to the website at all, we went up a little bit. We have a little bit over 215,000 total users visiting the website this year. Sessions were about flat, a little bit down, but that's kind of good news because that means people are coming to the website and they're getting their information, and they don't have to come back and look at a lot of different pages. Page views are up a little bit as well. And then on the right, we have page views, and these are the eight top ones, top search items and also pages visited. And pretty evenly, about 20% for the Newsflash items that are updated every day. Then we get into utilities, services, that's always a lot of big search engine, search and chatbot as well. Jobs, billing, brush collection, crime and arrest report, which always surprises me how many people are interested in that, and leaf collection. And then we also added a chatbot that's called Fetch the Answer, and that lives on the bottom of the page in a little, that's supposed to be a robot bulldog. Phrase is our vendor for this. 1,215 people visited this website, or this chatbot, to ask a question, and they asked over 1,900 questions. There's, the answer click-through rate is, sometimes an answer will give you a click, a link to more information to get your answer. And once you're there, you can rate your answer, too, up or down, whether the answer was helpful or not. And so this is where it was really disturbing, because 91% of the answers were downvoted, which means they either didn't like the answer, or they got the incorrect answer. So I contacted Phrase, talked to them about the poor results, and they said, you know, people downvote answers because they just maybe didn't like the fact that they needed a fence permit. When they searched for a fence permit, they got the information, but they just didn't like the fact that they needed a permit. But I still thought, you know, we could do better. Then they informed me they were moving to a large language model AI search, and that has helped a little bit. So now, if you come to this and use the website, the large language model, it uses more contextual and more data search, even live stream searching, and you get a better, you just get a better answer. So instead of just saying, "Here's the link," it'll actually say, "Yes, you do need a permit, and here's where you can find out more." Top topics that people ask questions about, not no surprising, report of concern, billing, refuse brush, all the typical things. We do, this is the one area where we get a lot of report of concern questions. I think people are always wanting to report things like noise, or stray animals, or fast drivers, all kinds of things. Onto social media. So on the left-hand side here is just some examples of some posts that we, typical posts that we do. I measured, I'm showing you just the followers metric, because Facebook has followers, reach, likes, but these other social media platforms don't. So to be fair, I'm just calculating the followers and showing you that information. The Batavia Police Department has the largest following. They have 13,000 followers. That also includes their Instagram followers. Facebook for the City of Batavia is 8,000, Fire Department 3,400, Environmental Commission about 1,500, 1,600. And then the Active Transportation Commission is kind of small because they just started. They, I think they had a transition from the Bike Commission. And then, new to us is Nextdoor. So I didn't know that we had to officially authenticate ourselves as the City of Batavia Nextdoor account, and so once I did, we automatically got 8,100 followers. What that means, though, is they're sort of passive. They're geo-targeted, so everyone in Batavia who is on Nextdoor is part of our following, so they will all get our posts. I had also heard recently that senior citizens are using, their biggest demographic is seniors on Nextdoor, so I'm really happy to have this in our, in our pocket, too, to communicate with our seniors. And then we have at the top of the donut there, just LinkedIn. We have about 660-plus LinkedIn followers, which is great. I think that spikes when we have job postings. And then I had to show us River. You have to follow our newest staff member, River. She's on Instagram, and we're really looking forward to her Instagram account growing as she grows. Look, she's just so cute, I can't stand it. Moving on to the biweekly newsletter. Our newsletter goes out twice a month, and we have about 4,100 subscribers, and that's a 2.3% increase over the previous year. That's pretty good. Open rate is a little over half, which is actually pretty good for a municipal newsletter. Only 5% of people actually click on the links in, within these briefs, but I'm not concerned about that, too, because most of the information you need is in the brief. Unsubscribe rate's pretty small, and it really is offset by the subscriber rate, new subscriber rate. But that said, I think we could still do better, and next year I'd like to look into maybe ways that we can change the platform, or the format, or the frequency, I'm not sure, but I think we can get more people to open up the newsletter and engage with the content there. Moving on, I kind of dumped a lot of stuff into the final content platform slide here. We have the Batavian, that's six times a year mailed to all addresses in Batavia. We share this with the Park District, the library, the school district, everyone gets pages that they pay for in the, in the Batavian. This year, we added a new emergency notification, well, notification system, Code Red, Alert Batavia. We have 12,000 people who have opted in to get notifications, which is great. We would like that to be much higher, though, so spread the word. It was a bumpy start. We had a bad link on the website, and people were having trouble signing up, so we really need to catch up, get more subscribers. We sort of inherited 300 email subscribers that we just moved over from Civic Plus, but those are, again, passive subscribers, they didn't opt in. We have about 24 alert groups, and that includes everything from people who want just traffic alerts to internal ones that are people that used to be paged in the city, now get a text from Code Red when they need to be contacted. We do have the ability to reach every household or every cellphone user in Batavia. If there was an extreme emergency, we would use the National Call Center database to reach out to everybody. Below here, there's a picture of what your notifications would look like in case people, you know, are like, "What? That looks like spam." It looks like these, pretty bare bones, but it always has the city logo on it. And then finally, this is all the other stuff that the Communications Department does. That includes updating the lobby monitors, utility billing stuffers. We will put information in the utility bills that get mailed out, postcards, door hangers, lawn signs, reusable bags, news releases, and events like Taco Tuesday that we all attended a few weeks ago. So I have some goals for 2025. So we already started a little partnership with Riverbank Media. These are, or excuse me, Riverbank Marketing. These are some students from the high school, and they were mentor to create some videos for us for emergency preparedness. And tomorrow, we're gonna work with them to create some road diet videos with Rahat and Laura and Sergeant Langston. We're gonna tell people how to drive on a road diet. We're gonna tell people why we're doing it. And it should be great, and they're gonna whip these out before Monday, I hope. So I'm hoping to expand on that partnership. We really do need more videos for engagement, and we'll also hopefully work with BATV as well to create content, share content. Also this year, we instituted an external communications review policy, and this was something that sort of came out of city council. I think there was a feeling that we weren't communicating as good as we could with some of our residents about some issues, so we decided to institute this policy whereby we would review, Laura and I would review, content, just so also we have a situational awareness of what is being sent out, so we know in case residents ask us questions. So we're still working on the implementation of that and seeing how it's gonna do. So next year, we'll really evaluate the success of it, and if we want to make some changes to it. We have also, I wanted to improve the content on the website, and I think no one's gonna argue this, that, you know, it could be better. Some of our search is really poor on the website. We have a lot of old content, things that need to be updated. So it's really hard for one-person staff to do all that. So we partnered with Vicarious Multimedia, not partnered, but we hired Vicarious Multimedia to provide a content audit and review, to just hopefully give us some suggestions on how we might improve. So next year, we will evaluate those and hopefully implement those. We would also like to focus on larger, more events that reach a larger demographic. I think the Taco Tuesday was a great start, and I think we'd like to expand on that, maybe do it in neighborhoods, do different type of events. So we were talking about maybe doing a city review or a state-of-the-city address, or an event, maybe in January or February next year. So we'll be working on that next year. And then recently, I met with Wendy and her staff, and we discussed ways that we could publicly recognize and acknowledge the achievements of our own staff during those special weeks, like there's Public Works Week, and there's, you know, every, every profession really has a recognition week, so we want to be, we want to be on top of it. So we've created a calendar with everybody's weeks, and we'll be rolling out some ideas that might involve city council and some proclamations and things like that. And then finally, I am a part of the AI working group here within the city, and I'm really excited to learn about ways that I can leverage AI to assist in content review and search. And then finally, my final goal is to get that comfort dog that we need for the Administration Department.
Pretty much every department at this point is asking for a comfort dog.
Look at her, though, look at her! She's so cute!
Yeah.
So does anyone have any questions?
Laura, do you want to tell a little bit more about Street Stories that was on the last case?
Yes. So, Street Stories, let's see, can I go back? Oh, wait. What did I do? Uh, where was I? So Street Stories is a new video series that we are, we have partnered with the Riverbank Marketing students, again, and they went around with Mayor to Five Streets, wasn't Mayor? I think it was Five Streets, that were named after important people in Batavia. And he talked about those people and why the streets were named that. And so we were thinking we would get five videos, but we have the 12, I think. And so we're gonna roll those out next month after we're done with emergency preparedness. They're just great. We think they came out really well. And it was just super easy to work with the students. I think they spent maybe three, two hours, Mayor, with you, and they loved the experience. And I think you're gonna really enjoy these videos. They're great. And they're only 30 seconds each, so that's like really good, short Facebook story size, you know, whatever, if we ever had TikTok or Reels, those would, those would fit there.
These projects have been an excellent opportunity for us to introduce the high school students to what some of the careers are here and opportunities available at the City of Batavia, too. So it just has really been great working with them.
Yeah, they're really good to work with, yeah.
It might also be a real opportunity, too, moving forward, like, you know, recognizing people in different departments and the different things that happen here would also be a great way to market the city, is that these departments are as good as they are because of the people that are there.
Absolutely.
And then also to get people to join that group.
Right, right. Yeah, and we're hoping, you know, through things like the road diet videos we're gonna do tomorrow, where we do have Rahat speaking, you know, people will see, "Oh, we have this engineer here who knows what he's talking about." And the same thing with Sergeant Langston, you know, we have a police officer that's gonna explain something really, really well, so that gets their faces out there. Anybody else have any questions? John?
I have a question regarding the AI. Is there a particular platform that is gonna kind of be encouraged for employees to utilize? Is there gonna be a policy written?
Yeah.
Because obviously, if they go out and use any platform, then it's out there and people may know.
That's a great question, yeah. I'm glad you asked that, because, you know, we're a municipality and we're a government, so we can't just, you know, incorporate AI and grab all of our data, and who knows where it's going, right? So we have to put some really big gateways around everything. And so our working group is, we are working on a policy. I think there was another municipality, San Jose, was that it, Max?
Yeah, so we are also members of the GovAI Coalition, which is a group of over 400 units of government who are working on standardizing policies and other things. And then to that platform, we're looking at adopting Microsoft Copilot. It's not yet available for government clients, so if it was, we would probably be, want to move, we would want to be moving on that, but we're not there yet. So it's not even an option for us at this time, but that's kind of where we're going.
And then one of the, one of the other chatbots that we're looking at, a vendor is CityBot, and they're known in municipal government. They're the only municipal government provider of AI-based chatbots, and several communities around us are using it, Buffalo Grove, Elgin. So we're, I'm very interested in learning more about them and maybe going with that. And that's just AI just for search, so what that does is it just crawls our data on our website to provide answers. But if we were to incorporate just our own chatbot within the city, we would have to be careful that other information, like they weren't gonna, when somebody searched for, "Do I need a fence permit?" they don't get Geneva's, or, you know, or something like that. So we're, I would say, at least a year or two off from really incorporating AI. Anyone else? Thank you so much for your time, everyone.
And we'll move on to item eight, which is discussion on timing for moving forward with the master plan for the Batavia Fox River corridor.
I can, I can start us off there. There had been a request that was brought to staff to include $200,000 in design engineering for the 2025 budget for the purpose of moving forward with implementation of that Concept B. That is part of our master plan for the Batavia corridor, the Fox River. And I created a memo. It brings up some issues, why maybe instead we want to think about doing a feasibility study at this point. Might be a better use of that funding, given the status of the US Army Corps of Engineers has said that they, while they had a draft report out, that they have kind of paused and put the brakes on that, that they want to collect more data on the environmental impacts of removing those low-head dams. We also have not, I don't think as a group or in participation with the Park District, determined who is gonna be responsible for what parts of that project, either from a funding perspective or an eventual ownership perspective. And then finally, we know that our, the Park District has indicated that they have a number of capital projects that they are engaged in right now, redoing that Clark Island area, as well as the renovations that are taking place at their new building at 150 Houston Street, that would prevent them from being able to contribute toward a project within the next several years. And so staff recommendation would be if you'd like us to put a feasibility study into the 2025 budget, that that'd be our recommendation as to how to proceed.
I'll start. Yeah, we need to do something, is my opinion, and like, I was a little disappointed that it wasn't in the 2024 budget, because I thought through the conversations we were having last year that that's what was going to happen, was it was, "Okay, yes, we voted on B," and then we, the master plan concept and everything that we did, I thought that that's where we were headed. But that's neither here nor there. It's, that's, can't get too hung up on that. We need to do something, because we've been, no pun intended, treading water on this for over a decade, where we haven't done anything, or we tried to a while ago, and that referendum failed. And if anybody had walked the river just before it started raining and seeing that eventual impact of removing the dam completely and not having something in there is significant. I was up by the Fabian Forest Reserve. There were birds standing in the middle of the river, because the river is that low at that time. So this is not just, "Hey, this is gonna go up to Fabian Bridge, we're gonna do some stuff at Fabian Bridge, and it's gonna impact, you know, a mile upstream or more." So I want to make sure that we're doing something, because what are those agencies gonna do? They're not, we're not proposing to go pay for stuff that's happening north of the Fabian Bridge. I'm not sure, everything that's included in a feasibility study, I'm thinking of groups that do this for a living. There's one out in Colorado, that they would like draw it out the way it really is gonna look, rather than the poor drawing that was done by Hitchcock, in my opinion, that really did not show what it would look like. If that's what a feasibility study is, it's like, "Yep, you can do it, and here's kind of what it would actually look like," then I'm in favor of doing that, because at least it gets us somewhere for when we decide to do something, which I thought we already decided, but... And I don't want to get hung up, you're talking to the guy that wants to save money all the time. I don't want to get hung up on the cost, because we, everybody keeps on looking to that big number and saying, "Oh, my gosh, that's a lot of money." A lot of things we do cost a lot of money and don't necessarily give us that return on investment very quickly. I'd probably argue that Warner has still not given its return on investment in the tax dollars raised in that area. So, but everybody would look at that as success, right? So I don't want to get hung up on the numbers, and we're not gonna get money, we are gonna get money. It's an investment. It's an investment in the future of Batavia, and I think it's a really important thing to do, and I think we could use TIF money, because we've got to use that or lose it soon. So, it's my thoughts.
I agree with Alderman, you are that forward progress is critical here. I mean, it's been more than a decade, because these conversations were happening with similar designs in the year 2000, correct? Like, there was conversations, I don't want this to be, I don't want us to put this off for Council of 2044, I don't think that's fair. So, I think if this is the step that we need to take next, if the Park District is not willing, you know, there's so much information that we need to really confirm, like, from the Army Corps of Engineers. So, if this is what our next step is for forward progress, then I am fully in support of moving forward to get this in motion.
I'll second what both of them said. I really think we need to take whatever steps we have to to get this going forward, regardless of where the Park District is, regardless of what ends up actually being in the river when we're done. We need to do two things. We need to remove the dam, and we need to preserve the pond. And the two ways to do that, I think, is to get the Army Corps of Engineers involved in this, as they're doing their, whatever this latest study entails in total, and find out what it's, what the real feasibility is for us to be able to do that. Because I think we're going to take however many cubic yards of concrete out of the river on one side, that really need to be on the other side of the river, to make the pond an actual pond. And then we have to figure out how to preserve that. And that's going to be part of the discussion, I think, we have to have with Park District, because that's going to be what they're going to have, I believe, as, you know, their, some of their responsibility has to lie within that. As far as the river and the dam area goes, that's ours already, that's our decision, and that's something that we can move forward with.
Um, just a couple of things. I just want to make sure that we keep in mind that US Army Corps of Engineer has told us if we implement, um, Concept B, that we will not receive any funding to assist us with the removal of the dam and, you know, any other part of that project. They said if we did do a full removal of the dam, and we built a berm to preserve the pond with the pump system, that would be something that then we would be eligible for the funding to, that if a program is developed, right? Because there's no guarantee that there will be a project for funding, but if there is a project developed, the feds were going to pay 65%, and IDNR was going to pay the other 35%. Another important issue that I think everyone should consider is, when we first started talking about this project during my tenure, we spent a couple of years turning over every stone we could to find a way that we possibly did not own this dam. And so, Concept B would basically be us owning another dam. I just want people to go into it realizing that you're going to have all of the liability associated with that dam. Right now, our insurance carriers are saying, as long as you work to remove that dam, we will insure its, uh, its property, its, um, uh, personal safety liabilities associated with it, not the property liabilities, but those seem to be very low. But if we were to put something else in, I'm not sure if that's something we would be able to get our liabilities covered for. And that should be part of that feasibility study.
That was going to be one of my things, is I think that that should be part of the feasibility of it, whether we go forward with that concept. In the end, we really need to know, I mean, I'd at least like to ask Yorkville, how did they handle it when they did the redo that they did in the river down there? Do they own that? Do they insure that? How has that been done? So, I'm sure we can get that, those questions answered, because I think that also lends to the point, you know, in the future, how would we do that? I, I don't think right now, from what I understand out of the Park District, that they want anything to do with the liability of owning any part of the river other than what they have in the pond. That's it. You know, I don't think they want to go any further with that. And I don't know, in the end, if we were to remove the entire entirety of the dam that's out there now, what that would do as far as, you know, how, exactly how far north it is. My recollection from when we went through this, one of the iterations previous to this, when we had somebody from, I think from IDNR that was here with hydraulic model, modeling of the river, it extends about 1,000 feet north of the island that's up now in Fabian Forest Reserve. So, where the newest bridge is up there, about 1,000 feet north of that. So, that's quite a bit of the river that would drastically shrink, you know? And the only times it would ever get to what it is today, or what it's normally at, would be high water. The rest of the time, it would all be much lower than it is and much narrower. So, there's a lot of things to take into account when that dam comes out. Robin?
Just to clarify, we're just, we are discussing between the two options of doing the 200,000 for the full design engineering versus a feasibility study. Okay.
And I think because we don't know exactly what the Army Corps of Engineers is going to say when they get through with what they do, I think we do the step one, or, you know, not, not the full design. Because if we don't have their buy-in to do that, I don't know that we go forward with that, because I just don't know that we can fund all of it. I mean, if we had to fund a couple of million to take it out and build another berm, you know, versus 10 or 15 million, that's a big difference.
We just don't know what any of these costs, we just keep on throwing out numbers, we really have no idea.
And that's where, and engineering from doing a feasibility study is going to look at comparable projects and be able to...
I mean, I, I've been watching the video of the Carpenter'sville Dam come out and the different stages of it. And it, you know, that looks pretty simple, but I know this one is not, because there's nowhere near the depth that ours is, is what's up at Carpenter'sville, you know? Leah?
I know we went back and forth and back and forth and spent hours on this in the past years. And I know when the eight of us voted in favor of Concept B, it was in light of waiting for the feasibility study and perhaps engineering study and seeing what the cost is and seeing, like, what the plan was. It was a, it was a yes to moving forward with Concept B. It wasn't necessarily a, we are sticking to this no matter what, but it was a, let's keep getting information. And I think that's what we're asking for tonight, is, okay, we haven't had any additional information since voting for Concept B, and we want more information. We want that feasible, that feasibility study, um, because, as Mark said, we're, we're trying to make decisions based on a concept design without having any idea what that means, really, like, what it means to the river, what it means to downtown Batavia, what the cost is. Um, and so, as we're waiting to see what the Army Corps of Engineers is going to say, and as we're waiting to see what the Park District is or isn't going to do, even what our neighboring towns are going to do, we need to continue gathering information so we're ready to go. Because otherwise, we're going to be years behind the project, and so we need to be ready to go. I am a little confused about the conversations we had with the Park District. We had them here in the room, we had multiple roundtable discussions. For them to now be like, oh, well, we don't know what we're doing, and we're five years behind, so...
Well, to be fair, um, the joint project that we engaged in was a master plan, and the end of that master plan had no timeline in it. So, had we had discussions with them about what the expectations were, about the timeline for the project, I would agree with you. But I think that they felt that the project had been completed, that the master plan was there, so that at such time, when both parties were ready to move forward, we would. We could certainly, if we want to fund it and own it and all of that, I'm not sure that our partners at the Park District would disagree with that.
Well, but, we all know that the dam is failing, so that's not new information. And they want the Depot Pond to stay there for their own recreational Park District use. So, we're trying to make, um, decisions for them. And so, that's where I'm just a little confused on, on that aspect of it.
They're just not interested in moving forward at this time, but if we are wanting to engage in the study, I, I think they would have no problems with us moving forward with that. It's just, it's similar to where they had their own independent project with Hitchcock Design Group, too, to talk about, they needed to see more about what type of Park District amenities that would be associated with all of those concepts, and that was a kind of a pause in the project while we waited for the results of that.
I also agree with Alan, I was thinking about this earlier today, that, you know, Yorkville had put something back in the river, and they have a recreational, um, aspect to their river, and somehow, I'm assuming, they have insurance, and so, to do further research on what Yorkville has done.
I don't...
It's been several years since I talked to them about that. I think that theirs went in in 2008.
Yeah, and I don't know if they actually own that, or if that's DNR or what it is. So, that would be all the questions we'd have to answer on that. Your Honor?
Yeah, I'm a strong supporter of the feasibility study. I think we need to get all the components on the table, so we know exactly what is and what isn't. I will share with you that I, I can't remember when it was, it was a long time ago, but the Illinois Department of Natural Resources showed up one day, and they were nosing around on this thing, and they were asking a lot of questions about the Depot Pond, you know, and it was, you know, that was man hug, man-made and dug to, to help facilitate the US Wind Engine and Pump Company, which is down, was down there, now we're Walgreens and all that was. So, that was creating a second body of water to, to do that. But they were very interested in the fact that in 1958, the Saturday Evening Post featured that very nice scene of the ice skating going on in the pond, and that was done by John Falter, who was recognized as one of the foremost artists, along with Norman Rockwell, that did those Saturday Evening Post covers for years and years and years. And they were saying that that should be noted as a significant piece of Illinois history, because it's one of the few times that Illinois got featured on a front cover of a national magazine, and it was done right here in Batavia. And then, of course, I threw in that, you know, when this factory was done by Capel, they had a pretty big division called DK Aerospace. And they were in here making components for the US space industry. And as it was pointed out in the book that was written by the three astronauts when they came back from the first landing on the moon, the book's called First on the Moon, and on page 77 of that book, it talks about that the flexible fuel lines that were in that rocket that landed on the moon were in this building, were made in this building. And so, the US, the, the natural resources people said, well, you've got some phenomenal history here that really needs to be put together and accented and displayed and talked about. And so, I, I strongly support that, and given the fact that on the Depot Pond part of the river, we've had multi-millions of dollars of investment done by people who've bought condos and built buildings and done everything else. And I'm just very much want to try to retain that image and that resource there, because a lot of people really do cherish that view and that pond there. So, I think the pond is something, and what, what the rest of the river does, we need to know that. That's why I think it would be very good to go ahead with this resource study.
My understanding was that we voted because we favored Option B to have the tiered system, so we would maintain the Depot Pond. There was that over the option of putting a berm there. Now, I understand the berm to keep and pump, uh, the Depot Pond. There's a big pool of water, the impound will go away, which we know, and you can kind of get a light of that, as Mark pointed out, when we've had, haven't had rain in a while. So, my understanding is the direction from the council is, is to move forward with the tiered system. Now, I understand the Army Corps of Engineer has put pause, they may come back and say, yeah, we're going to continue as we planned, or they may come back and say, you know what? We're not going to take out those, those dams anymore. We still have the dam, we still have the problem, and we need to make the best use of that. I fully agree with, with Mark that, uh, you know, the best use of that would be to maintain the pond, maintain the, the impoundment, um, and create, uh, a opportunity on the river. Now, where that funding comes from, we're going to have to, you know, plan for that, but, but as of now, it's not a question of whether, uh, the, the council has decided that they want the tiered, the, the, the tiered system, uh, to maintain the, the Depot Pond, and, you know, if that changes in the future, that's, that's a different vote. But as of now, that's what the direction from this council is. So, I think moving forward, I, yeah, moving forward with the design, engineering design, I agree, that's not appropriate at this time. However, moving forward with what it would look like in a feasibility study, I fully support that. And with the understanding that the direction from the council at this moment is, we have a tiered system that gets put in place that preserves the pond and the impoundment.
Mark?
Yeah, just one more thing on the Army Corps. Having known some of the work for the Army Corps, their, their funding is all determined by Congress, so there's nothing that says we can't just go and talk to Congress and say, hey, you said no, they said no, but we just talked to our representatives and say, yeah, but. And they control, they, they control those purse springs. So, just because they say no now, doesn't mean that that's, it's no forever, so.
So, just in rebuttal to some of the comments that have been made, there were several people who were against Option B. There could be several people in the future that are against Option B. There could be several people in the future that say we should just fill in the whole pond, depending upon who's sitting here. There's actually no reason to go forward with an engineering study that costs that much money. That's number one. Number two, if you want to make sure that the pond is maintained and stays a pond, the way to do that would be the berm. Everybody knows that. The feasibility study might be good to prove that if you put the tiered system in, it's going to drain the pond anyway. And so, then how are we going to keep it? I mean, you know, you can't, I don't think that you can have it both ways with the way the situation is. That's the first thing. Another thing is, I know that all the, lots of communities along the river are having discussions about the dam. So, there could be a situation in the future, what if they all take the dams out upstream anyway? How's that going to affect everything? I know that it's, you know, is it too far away for these other dams to affect the river? But I mean, the river's ecology is going to change if numerous, if numerous communities take out their dams along the river. And then if we're sitting there with, you know, something that is a tiered system, I'm just not sure how that's even going to be effective if the river goes down all the way upstream, because all the dams are out anyway. Then, with the attorney in me, I am terrified of the heaven, I'll pay all the liability and the insurance for a tiered system when it's a situation where the Park District wants it, but they want no responsibility for it. And I think that's completely unfair. So, I think there's heavy costs involved. I, I mean, everybody's already heard my arguments about this, it's not time to rehash that, but I definitely say we do not go anywhere near an engineering study. And a feasibility study might actually point out that what we, what some of us voted for is not viable anyway.
I'm going to sort of echo what everyone's saying here. I think Chris is absolutely correct in that, I don't know, we're not here to renegotiate which plan we're going with, we're here to figure out if the plan we decide is going to work or not. Uh, so a feasibility study makes a whole lot of sense. Um, I think an excellent point was brought up, is that the Army Corps has agreed to do these things in the past, and they've agreed not to do them in the past. In my experience, which is not insignificant in building in-river recreation systems, the Army Corps can be moved. They can be moved pretty effectively. Uh, the state can be moved pretty effectively, and that we're not sort of passive actors in this, even in the slightest, right? We can leverage our role as a municipality and our funds and such to get, you know, to move these, these folks around, which is just sort of a long-winded way of saying, what are we waiting around for everyone else for, right? If the, if the Park District doesn't want to do something, it's still our river, still our dam. Uh, if the Park District does want to get on board, great, let's bring them along. If the Army Corps wants to get on board, let's bring them along. If they don't, let's not. All of that hinges on, does this plan actually work? So, a feasibility study seems to be sort of, whether we go with it or we change directions, got to know if it's going to work, don't we? I would just finish off by saying that once we get the feasibility study, though, that's a no-go, no-go point. I think at that point, then we pick our plan, stick with it, start raising funds, leveraging funds, you know, putting pressure on the organizations around us to get it done, so that we're not 10, 20 years down the line like we have been in the past. Again, because I, I just don't like being the passive actor in this, especially with something so important and dangerous at the same time.
Can we clarify before moving on, just what a feasibility study is going to entail? I don't want to get our hopes up that we're going to have all of our questions answered with a feasibility study, because some of the things we've tossed out sound a lot like engineering. And so, if we're not going to invest all the way in getting all of our questions answered, I'm just curious.
You know, at this point, I'd have to research it more, but my inclination is that they're going to take a look at what impacts... they're going to take a look at what impacts the project will have on safety and ecology. They will look at rough costs to construct as well as future maintenance, cost to include insuring against liabilities. But I also think they'll look at the permitting aspect of it, too. And again, they're going to look at it in terms of what is the current environment for permitting new dams in rivers. So I think those are probably broad brush, be the areas that they would look at. And if you can think of other areas that you want to put into a request for proposals.
Also, if asked, they'll talk about the economic viability. What is that long-term? What does that do? Because that is some of the stuff that they've, that company out in Colorado has done. Hey, you do this and here's the economic benefit. And then they'll go back and show you, here's these communities that have had this economic benefit from this. They will talk fish passions. They will, you know, here's how you design it so the fish get through. Here's how you design it to still improve aeration and things like that. So they'll talk about those things, what you can do, and then what those costs are associated with that.
And again, I think we all need to keep and remember that, you know, the goals that I think even if we didn't like one plan or the other, the goals were twofold. The dam goes and the pond stays. You know, those were the two things that we talked about and how we did it was what we differed on. I think now we have to figure out, is it feasible? Is it something that we can move forward with on our own? Do we have to have other agencies participate in it? And, you know, where do we go from there? I think of the South Dam coming out, that that really didn't affect anything around here. You know, you can, they can go in and show us pretty simply with the cubic flow rates at the different spots that they have measured on the river, that the flow is not going to change whether the dam is broken or the dam is whole. The same amount of water goes through the system. It's just how does it do it and when does it do it? If it floods and there's no dam there, it goes through a lot quicker. If there is a dam there, it gets held back and it goes a little bit slower. But the same flow goes through there. So I'm not, I'm not too worried about whether we're by ourselves or whether everybody does it. It's not going to make that big a difference in the middle section of the Fox River. So are we agreed that we want to move forward feasibility-wise? Not engineering-wise yet. Okay, then that's the direction.
All right. Thank you.
That was way too easy. Okay. Now we're going, now we're going to move on to item nine, which is discussion on a new position for Assistant Public Works Director.
So as we know, unfortunately, our wonderful Public Works Director, Gary Holm, has given notice of his intent to retire early next year. Gary has made tremendous contributions during the times, the time that he has spent here. In particular, a lot of his time has been focused on addressing the concerns of our electric utility during a time when there were, you know, many, many changes. And he came on board in a tumultuous time where, you know, things had just kind of turned south with that deal and has dealt with that over all of these years. Because of his intense focus on that particular area, one of the things that Gary is recommending that we do is create this position of Assistant Director of Public Works. And we think this will be very helpful in our succession planning to bring this position online now before Gary retires so that the individual in that position will have this period of time to work alongside him and perhaps be, you know, similar model from what we've done in other departments, having assistants there in order to learn the ropes of leading that department. You know, Gary mentions in his memo, some of those areas where an assistant would have significant contribution in departmental strategic planning, policy creation, review and revisions, enhancing safety and compliance programs, and organizational efficiency reviews, and even an APWA accreditation effort that we could undertake. We just haven't had the bandwidth to be able to pursue things like that. And so Gary included some organizational charts in his, attached to his memo that show the current department structure and the recommendation of how that would be structured under, with an Assistant Public Works Director, that each one would have three divisions that they focus on. Whomever was the, had the electric kind of aptitude at that point would have the electric utility on their side. But we are proposing that we implement this position immediately so that we can post it in October and give that person the benefit of working alongside Gary for the next three to four months.
We discussed this, I think, a little bit back when we rearranged the PPS and Streets and tried to, you know, separate out some of the divisions into their own separate entities where that was going to be part of the planning moving forward. So I'm not afraid of that. I think that's a good idea to be able to have multiple people that can handle the operational setup that we have as we've grown into the model that we have now. So I don't know if anybody else has comments on it. Tony?
It makes sense to me. You mentioned lower other departments. We've done that. We've been doing with the Police Department, similar where there's, well, two deputies, but we've expanded that to the Fire Department. We're thinking we're seeing the benefits of that. It's a pretty complex operation that Gary's in charge of. And, you know, I valued what he's brought to the table for us. And I know there'll be some big shoes to fill. And any assistance we can give to, things we can put in place, I support that.
I always think, too, moving into the future, it's not just about the one retirement that's today. It's about how does the organization progress for the next decade or the next two decades? How do they get through that? And how does it work? And does it work well for them?
And it is always a great thing if we can promote people from within our organization without, without having to look externally for these positions.
Institutional memory, which I think we've brought that up countless times. That is extremely important.
Yeah.
Not opposed to it. I think it's a, it's a decent idea. I guess what I was hoping to see a little bit more in that memo is like, what haven't we done that we're going to do outside of that accreditation? And it's like, hey, we can do better in these things, but have there been things that we, like, here's all the things we've just kicked the can on forever? Because I don't really get a sense of that from the memo. It's like, here's where we can make some improvements, but not like, these have been like major pitfalls. I mean, I haven't heard a lot of these concerns in the past seven years. So that's, that's my only concern there.
So what I would say, and I, and this is a huge one, that in, the city has its strategic plan and the Fire Department has, also has a strategic plan at this point. Each department within our organization should have their own strategic plan that cascades down from the larger strategic plan. There isn't the bandwidth within the Public Works Department to do that. And that's a very huge thing, you know? I mean, they have responsibilities that are part of the current city's strategic plan, but ideally, they would have a plan that covers all of the different operations within their division. So I think that is one huge thing. The other thing is the organizational efficiency reviews that he is talking about here, looking at the way that we do things today and recognizing, is studying that process to determine if it's efficient. People are so busy today, they oftentimes don't have the opportunity to stand back and take a 30,000-foot view of it and say, is there a better way to do this? Can we redo it so people can be more productive, so we could increase the quality of the services? And just that ability to collect the data, to make data-driven decisions. We hear that all the time, too.
Yeah. And I'd be like super in favor of what we did for economic development is to, hey, let's take, bring in an outside party because there is so much institutional knowledge. And every time I've hired somebody new and I'm like, hey, don't just keep doing things because that's the way we do it. You promote from within and you have all this leadership that is the same people that have been doing it all the time. And maybe we're not looking under the rocks the way we, someone normally would. And if you, if we threw that as part of that, hey, okay, great, but let's give you some outside perspective ways to do things differently since it is a lot of good institutional knowledge of Batavia, but not necessarily a good perspective on other ways to do it.
I'm in support of this. It was definitely something that we talked about during the retreat. And the one thing that I really see that's going to be up and coming that we've talked about is definitely with our electrical department and the changes that'll be coming down the pipeline in the next couple of years with the move to some green energies and also making sure that our infrastructure is in place to support that. I can see that as being a very long-term project that needs a lot of focus. And I think that splitting them up into these will allow the person that has the electrical department and engineering underneath them to really have a good focus on putting that together.
Yeah. I just, I just want to say, I've been sitting here listening to the conversation from the alderman, and I'm very pleased to hear what I heard, that most, you all recognize that this is a very valuable position. And if you think about it, you know, you start with water, sewer, and electric, but then there's all kinds of other sidebar avenues that run into this department, you know, be it drainage and be it streetlights and being, you know, wastewater and the sewer. I mean, there's just a lot of moving parts here. And we got to make sure that we got somebody in line that's got a staff with them that is able to handle all this stuff. Because if, and we've done a good job under Gary's leadership, I think, to do that. But we want to maintain that and continue to do it. And just going forward here, it looks like there's going, as we've talked many nights here, there's other things that are on the table that are coming knocking on our door that we're going to have to take a look at. And we should have, you know, a knowledge and a background, just bringing in all the technology that's now being suggested that has to be brought in to integrate into these systems. There's just a lot of moving parts. So I appreciate the idea and the support that we're hearing from the City Council. So thank you very much.
Not much of the budget year left for, that shouldn't be a problem for the budget to handle that position for this year. And then we figure it out during our budget cycle for next year.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Then we will move on to item 10, project status.
Just a few things. The planning and zoning staff are attending the American Planning Association Illinois Division Annual Conference all of this week down in Champaign. We are going to be hosting meetings with city staff, area property and business owners, city council, and other key person interviews for the kickoff of our South River Street Study. We've hired Housiel Levine again to assist us with that. And they plan to have an elected officials' roundtables, tentatively scheduled for you on October 2nd. I believe that starts at 6:30. In fire, Deputy Chief Lucas and Battalion Chief Bocidus and Battalion Chief Swinski and Battalion, and Battalion Chief Hogan attended a three-day class that was about quality improvement for fire and emergency services. It's part of our, the Batavia Fire Department Strategic Action Plan goal that's related to accreditation. And then on the police side, Detective Elizabeth Webb attended a training seminar at Aurora University that was titled Juvenile Justice Reimagined. And the seminar focused on innovative approaches to address key issues affecting youth populations in the justice system. And key topics included juvenile justice system structure and process, advocacy, alternatives to detention, and juvenile detention and probation. So we've got multiple people in multiple departments engaging in a lot of continuing education and kind of honing the blade and learning the best practices that are out there. And that's all I have. Also, we're gonna, as Lori mentioned, we're going to be creating some videos tomorrow to help explain a little bit more about the road diet. And maybe we can weave in there some of the feedback that we've received from the community about some of the concerns that they have. One of the things, I think the biggest thing I'd like people to know is we're scraping off lines and we're putting new lines on there. This is not a construction project. We're not building curbs. And so if, for some reason, we find that it is causing more concerns than the issues that it was meant to alleviate, then we have the opportunity to change it back. But it's our hope that it will be similar to other projects that are going on from coast to coast here in the United States, some of which are 20 years old at this point, which have shown a significant increase in the safety of everyone on the road, motorists, pedestrians, and bicyclists included.
I would add, if, just some of the comments I saw, because I don't think that there's going to be a shoulder. And then people are like, oh, getting around the garbage trucks in Amazon, it would, just like any other street, you pass with care. Probably it's something that needs to be stated in there because I know that people are like freaking out. They're going, oh, the lines behind all these things. No, doesn't, that's not how it works. So, sure.
Do you have any others this evening? Mark?
I do. Want to thank Lori. She sent over, this is something I've been thinking about for a long time, the contract, the original contract with Viola, which was the garbage company a long time ago. It's Waste Management now. I want to bring up to have a discussion about that contract. I thought it was a forever contract, but I guess it's only nine more years, but it's still.
Thirty-year contract.
Yeah, it's a 30-year contract. There's nine years left in it. But I do remember when we were negotiating garbage rates, that Groot was like, oh, we can do it cheaper if we could use our transfer station. And I'm not saying to shut the transfer station down. It's not what I'm saying. I want to try and renegotiate something with them to get ourselves out of that requirement to dump there. They can still take everything from everybody else, but not necessarily forcing us to do it. And is there a way that, then we can save our residents' money on garbage and then maybe potentially even expand that facility that then we would have additional revenue? I don't know. So I would, if somebody will join me, I'd love to have that as a discussion to figure out ways to work on that.
Sure. Back then, it was the city who demanded that all of the waste from the city be dumped there because that's how we get the revenue from the transfer station. It's by the tips that get tipped there. So by sending that away, we would miss that part of the revenue.
We'd miss that part of it. And it'd be interesting to know, and maybe it's a question for them, are they at capacity? You know, can they take no more? And expanding their capacity allows them to.
Because if they were able to increase and they needed to increase beyond the tonnage they're taking today, they'd be in here asking for it. And I don't know how much further they can go with that. I'd have to go back and look at the contract. Because they got one increase already. They've come back and gotten an increase in the amount that they can run through there. So that was, that was one thing.
I'll join Mark on that. I think, you know, having been through several votes on garbage, I think the more the council's aware and informed, the better we're going to be because time, time's moving on. And before you know it, we're going to be voting again on another garbage plan.
Yeah. And is there intent? It'd be interesting, is there intent in nine years? Be like, we're done. And then we'd have to think of something anyway because we'd lose a ton of revenue. It's like 450 grand. I mean, that's, it's a, it's a significant amount of revenue for the city. So, and again, that was not my intent to say, oh, throw it out. I don't, no pun intended. I, you know, it's, you know, I don't want to get rid of that. I just want to see if there's other things that we can explore.
It also might be a good time to discuss with them, as the owners of that, what their intentions are, when the contract.
Exactly. So maybe it's, yeah, maybe that takes a few weeks to get some information from them and say, hey, we're interested in talking about this. What are your plans?
They're probably interested in getting to 2033 when they don't owe us the tipping fees anymore.
Or the tip fees just go away in 2033?
Gary, can you confirm? That 30-year agreement, it was, they were paying us fees based on the tonnage that they're tipping there for 30 years. And then it ends. Yes.
And then they won't pay us anything at that point?
No.
Does the permit still continue?
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that might be something to look at. Again, maybe they do want additional space, maybe. I don't know. Again, maybe they do want additional space, maybe, I don't know.
Anybody else have any others? And then we need a motion to go into executive session for personnel. Who made the motion? I didn't see him move, I just heard it. So a motion by Housie, seconded by Malley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.